Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 9th meeting of
board concerning a matter that's not on our agenda?
the Planning Commission.
All right. Approval of the agenda.
Time is seven o'clock.
Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we accept.
Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Meese.
Mr. Webb?
Is there a second?
Here. I'll second.
Mr. Brown?
Second by Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Please cast your vote.
Here.
Did yours come up?
Ms. Meese?
Mine hasn't come up.
Here.
No, I don't vote either way.
Mr. Dalton?
Mine did come.
Here.
I got mine.
Mr. Oaks?
Another glitch.
Here.
Did yours come up?
Ms. Henderson? Ms. Meese, can we have your vote verbally?
Present.
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Here. Motion to accept the agenda. Please join us for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Passes seven yes, zero no. Approval of the minutes. [inaudible] Floor is open for a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Webb and second by Ms. Henderson. Mrs. Meese, how do you vote?
How do you vote?
In favor? Motion to accept the minutes.
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
From?
Can you give us your vote verbally?
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes passes seven yes, zero no. Chairman's report. I have nothing to report new this evening. We'll get started with our public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:06, case R-23-028 is open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-028, John and Tina Stein have petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 11.08 acres located on State Road 41 Franklin Turnpike in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be subdivided. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman John Stein is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Stein? Do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, no. I've never been to a hearing before, so I'm not sure. Do I need to explain what I?
Just a brief, in brief?
Okay, so what it is, I have 11 acres right off of 41. I wanted to gift my son an acre so he could build a house on it, and in the process of getting it surveyed, I found out that I couldn't cut an acre off it because it would not qualify as a residential lot because it has to have 750 feet of state-maintained road frontage. Well, none of my property has state-maintained road frontage. I have a quarter-mile right-of-way to get to my property, so actually, none of my property actually qualifies to be residential. So, I was looking to get it switched back to agricultural so I can do the other.
All right. Any questions? From anybody? All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
No one has signed up to speak for or against this case? If you're here to do either, now's the time. All right. At 7:08, public hearing is closed for this case. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-028, I make a motion that we change this from R1 Residential to A1 to allow the property to be subdivided.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters. We ready for a vote?
Ms. Meese, can we get your vote verbally?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Waters, can we get your vote verbally?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes. Seven yes, zero no. At 7:09, case R-23-029 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-029, Jared and Sarah Moser have petitioned to rezone three parcels totaling 11.08 acres located on State, on or off of State Road 863 Laniers Mill Road and State Road 746 Golf Club Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure in agricultural uses. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Jared Moser is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Moser.
Yes, I'm just going to, I built a new house on the 19-acre track, and the house is about 500 feet off the road. Coming down my driveway, I wanted to go off into the field on the right, which is about 300 feet off the road, and that's where I wanted to build a barn slash garage, and R1 would not allow me to do that because it was closer to the roadway than my home was. And that's where I come to, if I did A1, I could put the barn garage right there. The other parcels, there are two other parcels that are, and I was just making those, because I have another parcel behind these two that's already A1, and I was just trying to make them all the same, is what I was looking to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Moser? All right, thank you, sir. Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against this case either. At 7:11, public hearing is closed for this case. Mr. Waters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I make a motion that the Commission approve this application of rezoning the 52.13 acres from R1 to A1 in this case.
Motion by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks, thank you. We're ready for a vote. Motion carries, seven yes, zero no. At 7:12, case R-23-031 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-031, Sharon Smith has petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 11.08 acres located on US Highway 58, Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District from Residential Suburban Subdivision District to Residential Combined Subdivision District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home. Once the property is rezoned to RC1, all uses listed under Section 35-267 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Sharon Smith is here to represent the petition.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Harrison. I'm Sharon Smith's father. Bradford School was having a program, PTO and development program, tonight, and the rancher were on it, and they wanted her to be with them. So she asked me to come, sit in for her. She would like to get a lot rezoned on 58 so that she can put a double-wide on it for her daughter.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. You can have a seat, sir. Thank you so much. Anybody here to speak for or against this case? At 7:14, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-031, I make a motion that we change its zoning from RMF to RC1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Meese. We ready for a vote? Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no. At 7:15, case R-23-035 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-035, River City Enterprises has petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 10.224 acres located on State Road 360 Old Richmond Road in the Dane River Election District from M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to B2 Business District General to allow for the sales service and repair of farm equipment. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from River City Enterprises is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mrs. Ragsdale. Yes, please come forward. Do you have anything you'd like to express to this board that's not already in our packet?
I'm not sure what's in your packet, but I'm Elizabeth Hilton with Beverage Tractor and Equipment. We're owned by the River City Group, and we are the Covota dealership on Industrial Avenue in Danville, formerly Colley Equipment Company. We are looking to relocate so that we can grow our business. We need more space so we can upgrade our facility, and we do have the opportunity to start carrying construction equipment, so we needed more room.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against, so at 7:17, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-035, I'd like a motion to approve the request of River City Enterprises.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters. Ready for a vote?
[inaudible]
Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no. At 7:18, case CP-23-001 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
So this case is actually an amendment to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan that has been initiated by the Board of Supervisors. This area is currently designated for future land use as industrial. However, our Economic Development Department has looked at the property and has determined that this would be better suited for commercial uses, not industrial uses, based on its location and just general development in that area. So the Board of Supervisors is initiating the amendment for 21 parcels in that area, changing their future land use from that industrial to mixed commercial and industrial. This would not change anything related to their current zoning. It would not change anything relating to their current uses. It would just change what the county designates as the best future land use for those properties in the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale? Thank you. At 7:19, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown, I believe this is you?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case CP-23-001, I'd like a motion to approve amending the comprehensive plan from industrial to mixed commercial industrial.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb, we ready for a vote? Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no. At 7:20, case S-23-013 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-013, Susan Tetter has petitioned for a special use permit on 2.54 acres located on State Road 1002 Gentlemen's Ridge Road in the Dane River Election District for a school. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Susan Tetter is here to represent the petition.
Mrs. Tetter?
You're not Mrs. Tetter, so if you would, please state your name, state your name.
I'm Michael Decker, her son-in-law. We're gonna take our current wedding venue, and we're trying to turn it into a small private school. So we applied for the special use permit to be able to have a private school.
Gotcha. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What age groups is your school?
So, we're hoping to go all the way from preschool all the way to high school. Right now, we're currently enrolling first grade through, I think, 10th grade. We're enrolling the students this year, the enrolling students this year are attending, right now, we're renting a place in the city until we're able to get the approved zoning to move back out to the farm. But right now, we are currently still holding classes in a venue at the city.
How many students can you handle?
We're hoping to about 45. Right now, our enrollment's about 20. We're hoping to, once we get approval for the licensure, to have a preschool, we're hoping to have about five to eight kids in preschool.
So when you say you can take them through, all the way through 12th grade of high school, is that accredited, or you gotta get, you gotta continue to work to get accredited?
No, it's not accredited. Right, so they'll have the end-of-the-year testing to be able to go for the accreditation themselves.
Any other questions?
What about, Mr. Chairman, I have one. What about the fire and safety codes out there?
Yes, ma'am, so we had the public safety officers, the fire marshal, and the code enforcement officer come to the building several times, actually. We currently are, or were, before we started this process, a wedding venue that was rated for about 250 people. They did come through and make a few recommendations. We added a few fire extinguishers and, I think, six or seven exit lights, but all that's been up to code, and Scott's been out there to look at everything, and the building inspector's been out to look at everything, too, and they're pleased with everything. It's one big open room, the school's very open, and there's four exit doors going right to the outside. So there's no issues with egress or anything.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
I just will point my fellow commissioners' attention to the recommendations from staff. There's just one, remain in compliance with all applicable Virginia Department of Education regulations. Does anybody see that? All right. At 7:24, public hearing is closed. This is Mr. Brown.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case S-23-013, I would like a motion to approve on the condition that they meet the compliance with the Virginia Department of Education regulations. Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Henderson, ready for a vote? Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against this case either. At 7:11, public hearing is closed for this case. Mr. Waters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I make a motion that the Commission approve this application of rezoning the 52.13 acres from R1 to A1 in this case.
Motion by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks, thank you. We're ready for a vote. Motion carries, seven yes, zero no. At 7:12, case R-23-031 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-031, Sharon Smith has petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 1.512 acres located on US Highway 58 Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District from Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure in agricultural uses. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Jared Moser is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Moser.
Yes, I'm just going to, I built a new house on the 19-acre track, and the house is about 500 feet off the road. Coming down my driveway, I wanted to go off into the field on the right, which is about 300 feet off the road, and that's where I wanted to build a barn slash garage, and R1 would not allow me to do that because it was closer to the roadway than my home was. And that's where I come to, if I did A1, I could put the barn garage right there. The other parcels, there are two other parcels that are, and I was just making those, because I have another parcel behind these two that's already A1, and I was just trying to make them all the same, is what I was looking to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Moser? All right, thank you, sir. Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against this case either. At 7:11, public hearing is closed for this case. Mr. Waters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I make a motion that the Commission approve this application of rezoning the 52.13 acres from R1 to A1 in this case.
Motion by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks, thank you. We're ready for a vote. Motion carries, seven yes, zero no. At 7:12, case R-23-031 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-031, Sharon Smith has petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 1.512 acres located on US Highway 58 Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District from Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home. Once the property is rezoned to RC1, all uses listed under Section 35-267 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from River City Enterprises is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mrs. Ragsdale. Yes, please come forward. Do you have anything you'd like to express to this board that's not already in our packet?
I'm not sure what's in your packet, but I'm Elizabeth Hilton with Beverage Tractor and Equipment. We're owned by the River City Group, and we are the Covota dealership on Industrial Avenue in Danville, formerly Colley Equipment Company. We are looking to relocate so that we can grow our business. We need more space so we can upgrade our facility, and we do have the opportunity to start carrying construction equipment, so we needed more room.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against, so at 7:17, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-035, I'd like a motion to approve the request of River City Enterprises.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters, ready for a vote? Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no. At 7:18, case CP-23-001 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
So this case is actually an amendment to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan that has been initiated by the Board of Supervisors. This area is currently designated for future land use as industrial. However, our Economic Development Department has looked at the property and has determined that this would be better suited for commercial uses, not industrial uses, based on its location and just general development in that area. So the Board of Supervisors is initiating the amendment for 21 parcels in that area, changing their future land use from that industrial to mixed commercial and industrial. This would not change anything related to their current zoning. It would not change anything relating to their current uses. It would just change what the county designates as the best future land use for those properties in the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale? Thank you. At 7:19, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown, I believe this is you?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case CP-23-001, I'd like a motion to approve amending the comprehensive plan from industrial to mixed commercial industrial.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb, we ready for a vote?
Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no.
At 7:20, case S-23-013 is now open for public hearing.
Case S-23-013, Susan Tetter has petitioned for a special use permit on 2.54 acres located on State Road 1002 Gentlemen's Ridge Road in the Dane River Election District for a school. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Susan Tetter is here to represent the petition.
Mrs. Tetter? You're not Mrs. Tetter, so if you would, please state your name, state your name.
I'm Michael Decker, her son-in-law. We're gonna take our current wedding venue, and we're trying to turn it into a small private school. So we applied for the special use permit to be able to have a private school.
Gotcha. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What age groups is your school?
So, we're hoping to go all the way from preschool all the way to high school. Right now, we're currently enrolling first grade through, I think, 10th grade. We're enrolling the students this year, the enrolling students this year are attending, right now, we're renting a place in the city until we're able to get the approved zoning to move back out to the farm. But right now, we are currently still holding classes in a venue at the city.
How many students can you handle?
We're hoping to about 45. Right now, our enrollment's about 20.
Okay.
We're hoping to, once we get approval for the licensure, to have a preschool, we're hoping to have about five to eight kids in preschool.
So when you say you can take them through, all the way through 12th grade of high school, is that accredited, or you gotta get, you gotta continue to work to get accredited?
No, it's not accredited. Right, so they'll have the end-of-the-year testing to be able to go for the accreditation themselves.
Okay. Any other questions?
What about, Mr. Chairman, I have one. What about the fire and safety codes out there?
Yes, ma'am, so we had the public safety officers, the fire marshal, and the code enforcement officer come to the building several times, actually. We currently are, or were, before we started this process, a wedding venue that was rated for about 250 people. They did come through and make a few recommendations. We added a few fire extinguishers and, I think, six or seven exit lights, but all that's been up to code, and Scott's been out there to look at everything, and the building inspector's been out to look at everything, too, and they're pleased with everything. It's one big open room, the school's very open, and there's four exit doors going right to the outside. So there's no issues with egress or anything.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
I just will point my fellow commissioners' attention to the recommendations from staff. There's just one, remain in compliance with all applicable Virginia Department of Education regulations. Does anybody see that? All right. At 7:24, public hearing is closed. This is Mr. Brown.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, in case S-23-013, I would like a motion to approve on the condition that they meet the compliance with the Virginia Department of Education regulations.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Henderson, ready for a vote? Yes. Did yours come up here?
No, it didn't come up.
There we go. Motion carries, seven yes, zero no. At 7:25, case S-23-017 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-017, Network Towers has petitioned for a special
Richmond Road in the Dane River Election District from M to Industrial District, Heavy Industry, to B to Business District General to allow for the sales service and repair of farm equipment. Once the property is rezoned to B to, all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from River City Enterprises is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Yes, please come forward. Do you have anything you'd like to express to this board that's not already in our packet?
I'm not sure what's in your packet, but I'm Elizabeth Hilton with Beverage Tractor and Equipment. We're owned by the River City Group, and we are the Covota dealership on Industrial Avenue in Danville, formerly Collie Equipment Company. We are looking to relocate so that we can grow our business. We need more space so we can upgrade our facility, and we do have the opportunity to start carrying construction equipment, so we needed more room.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Again, no one has signed up to speak for or against, so at 7:17, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and case R-23-035, I'd like a motion to approve their request of River City Enterprises.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters. Ready for vote. At 7:18, case CP-23-001 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
So this case is actually an amendment to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan that has been initiated by the Board of Supervisors. This area is currently designated for future land use as industrial. However, our Economic Development Department has looked at the property and has determined that this would be better suited for commercial uses, not industrial uses, based on its location and just general development in that area. So the Board of Supervisors is initiating the amendment for 21 parcels in that area, changing their future land use from that industrial to mixed commercial and industrial. This would not change anything related to their current zoning. It would not change anything relating to their current uses. It would just change what the county designates as the best future land use for those properties in the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale? Thank you. At 7:19, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown, I believe this is you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and case CP-23-001, I'd like a motion to approve amending the comprehensive plan from industrial to mixed commercial industrial.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb. Ready for vote. Motion is approved, seven yes, zero no. At 7:20, case S-23-013 is now open for public hearing.
Case S-23-013, Susan Tetter has petitioned for a special use permit on 2.54 acres located on State Road 1002, Gentlemans Ridge Road in the Dane River Election District for a school. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Susan Tetter is here to represent the petition.
Mrs. Tetter. You're not Mrs. Tetter, so if you would, please state your name, state your name for the record.
I'm Michael Decker, her son-in-law.
Okay.
We're gonna take our current wedding venue, and we're trying to turn it into a small private school. So we applied for the special use permit to be able to have a private school.
Gotcha. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What age groups is your school?
So we're hoping to go all the way from preschool all the way to high school. Right now, we're currently enrolling first grade through, I think, 10th grade. We're enrolling the students this year, the enrolling students this year are attending. Right now, we're renting a place in the city until we're able to get the approved zoning to move back out to the farm. But right now, we are currently still holding classes in a venue at the city.
How many students can you handle?
We're hoping to about 45. Right now, our enrollment's about 20.
Okay.
We're hoping to, once we get approval for the licensure, to have a preschool, we're hoping to have about five to eight kids in preschool.
So when you say you can take them through, all the way through 12th grade of high school, is that accredited, or you gotta get, you gotta continue to work to get accredited, I'm assuming?
Right, so they'll have the end-of-the-year testing to be able to go for the accreditation themselves.
Okay. Any other questions?
What about, Mr. Chairman, I have one. What about the fire and safety codes out there?
Yes, ma'am, so we had the public safety officers, the fire marshal, and the code enforcement officer come to the building several times, actually. We currently are, or were, before we started this process, a wedding venue that was rated for about 250 people. They did come through and make a few recommendations. We added a few fire extinguishers and, I think, six or seven exit lights, but all that's been up to code, and Scott's been out there to look at everything, and the building inspector's been out to look at everything, too, and they're pleased with everything. It's one big open room, the school's very open, and there's four exit doors going right to the outside.
Yeah.
So there's no issues with egress or anything.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
I just will point my fellow commissioners' attention to the recommendations from staff. There's just one, remain in compliance with all applicable Virginia Department of Education regulations. Does everybody see that? All right. At 7:24, public hearing is closed. This is Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and case S-23-013, I would like a motion to approve on the condition that they meet the compliance with the Virginia Department of Education regulations.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. Ready for vote.
Yes. No, it didn't come up.
There we go. Motion carries, seven yes, zero no. At 7:25, case S-23-017 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-017, Network Towers has petitioned for a special use permit on 115.88 acres located on State Road 640, Renan Road, in the Stanton River Election District for the placement of a cell tower. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Network Towers is here to represent the petition.
Please come forward, sir, and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Drew Patterson, and I'm the Director of Network Towers. I have a presentation here that I'm gonna go over briefly. As noted, this is a special use permit request to construct a 199-foot tower on Route 640. The first wireless provider will be Verizon Wireless. As you may have seen in past meetings, or you'll see in future meetings, Verizon Wireless is investing heavily in Pennsylvania County. Large county, lot of rural areas, and Verizon Wireless is doing its best to give coverage in various areas of Pennsylvania. As you can see, the yellow pen shows the location of the proposed tower. It is off Route 640, as I noted. We did try to push the tower as far off the road as possible to reduce the visibility that it may have on adjacent properties. I can go over all the benefits of wireless today, but what I can say in short is that it really has become a public utility, and it really is a problem when areas do not have connectivity. Furthermore, I should note that public safety, it's a public safety issue as well. It's no secret that the vast majority of wireless calls, or the vast majority of E911 calls, are from wireless devices. The national average is somewhere around 70%, but that's rising. Most areas are closer to 80%. As you can see here, the red dot in the middle of the map is the location of the tower. The closest tower is about three and a half miles southeast in Mount Airy, and so you see this vast area, and these are the property lines. It is a rural area, but you can see from the property lines that this tower will be covering thousands of properties and thousands of residences. So the challenge here for us was finding a location that was far enough from the Mount Airy Tower, which is about three and a half miles away, so that we can relieve pressure from that tower, but also provide coverage to all the other areas. So when we looked for a site, we're actually given a very small search ring, probably about, I think this one was a quarter mile or a half mile, so we can't move much one way or the other, and then we have to face challenges such as topography and wetlands and all these other factors that, citing a tower really is a challenge in some cases, but we did find a property that we think is minimal visibility that will achieve Verizon Wireless's coverage objective. I should also note that while this is for Verizon Wireless, it is tall enough, we're building it structurally sound enough to have co-location positions for up to three other carriers. This is the location on the property. It is 646 foot from Route 640. It is 931 foot from Brookfield Lane to the north, and I'll go over in a second. We far exceed all the required setbacks. As you can see here, we are required to be 60 foot from the front yard. We're 646 foot. We're 586 foot further than what we're required to be. Side yard, the requirement is 10 foot. We are 931 foot, 921 foot further than required. Rear yard, 40 required, we're 1343, 1303 further than required. Pennsylvania County does not have a required setback from off-site residential structures, but we are 1,090 feet from the closest residential structure. As I noted, it's a 199-foot tower. It'll be a 195-foot tower with a four-foot lightning rod, so it really is 195 feet. It'll be galvanized steel to match the backdrop of the sky. It is a monopole design. You'll see some towers that are lattice-style, like the one outside here. This one is not a lattice-style tower. It's actually less visible than what you'll see outside of the building here. We did photo sims of the tower. We float a balloon, a three-foot diameter red balloon at the height of the tower, and then we go all around and take pictures of the balloon, and then we superimpose a tower so that we know exactly what the tower will look like from different vantage points. What I can say is the tower is visible from various locations, but it has very minimal visibility because we pushed it so far off the road. So we do think that it's a very well-sighted tower. You could see, this is the first view from the northwest. You can see the small orange arrow. It's hard to see, but that's what the tower would look like from the northwest. Again, hard to see, but there is an orange arrow far off. That would be the visibility, again, from another view from the northwest from Glenland Road. Here's the view Glenland Road from the north, the orange arrow in the backdrop. Harmony Road from the east, I would venture to say you can't even see it on this photo sim. This is 640 from the southeast. Again, in the middle of the photo, there's the orange arrow. And this is from the southwest. This is the most visible, but even at that, it's minimal visibility. And I will say, you know, with wireless, it's a line-of-sight technology, so the fact that you could see it means that it's working. You do need it to be visible so that you can have adequate coverage. I do bring up this slide because a lot of jurisdictions we go to, people talk about property values and these sorts of things, that the cell tower would have an effect on their property. There have been quite a few studies done on this very subject, and the fact of the matter is, in rural areas such as this, if you don't have wireless coverage, excuse me, if you don't have wireless coverage, it can actually detract from property value. The last bullet here from homes.com 2020, the National Association of Realtors said that homeowners lose approximately 2.8% in home value by not having broadband, broadband being internet. If you don't have internet at your house and you're in a rural area, it really can detract. That's my presentation. I'd be glad to ask any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, no one signed up to speak for or against this case unless someone has come in, all right? 7:33, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take this case.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
All right, and in case S-23-017 for Network Towers, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve this application for the placement of the cell tower to benefit the area that it will be in.
Motion by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Ready to vote. At 7:34, case S-23-020 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-020, David Roach has petitioned for a special use permit on 2.5 acres located on State Road 822 Beverly Heights Road in the Banister Election District for the placement of a manufactured home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, David Roach is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Roach, hey, good evening. Do you have anything to add, what we've already have in our packet?
Just a comment, it was pretty good to get it together. I had a medical problem, so I couldn't finish it, that's all.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Roach? I can have them come up. All right, thank you. 7:35, public hearing is closed. Mrs. Henderson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In the case of S-23-020, I'd like to make a motion that the Board does recommend approval in this case. I have not received any phone calls or emails in opposition, so I do submit that we do approve it as submitted.
Motion for approval by Mrs. Henderson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Meese, thank you so much.
No, no.
Second by Mrs. Meese. Ready for vote. I appreciate the enthusiasm. Motion to approve carries, seven yes, zero no. Thank you. That is it for our public hearing tonight. Old business.
Just to update everyone, we are still working on the zoning ordinance rewrite, so we do have a draft now, so that will be going into the public comment phase beginning in December. So I encourage the public to watch the county's website and social media pages regarding when that first public workshop will be held, because we would like lots of public input as we go through this portion of the process. It will go back to the Board of Supervisors after we receive public input. That next draft will go back to the Board around February to start the public hearing phase to move towards adoption, so it's very vital that if the public does want to give their input, that they do so during this step in the process.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ragsdale, do you know the date, or y'all working on that, put it, December?
I can give it to you, hold on just a second.
Well, I can get it later, it's fine. I just have some people asking about it.
Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for December 14th.
14th?
Yes, that's a Thursday. It'll be in this room at 6:00.
At 6:00?
So we're looking at 6:00 to 7:30. I say tentative because that could change, it's unlikely that it will, but right now that is the tentative date.
14th at 6 o'clock.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other old business?
That's all I have for old business.
New business? Let's see, we need to have a hearing for this, a public hearing for this part?
So the next two cases are variances. State code, these cases go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but state code requires that planning commissions be given the option to make a recommendation. It's not a public hearing. You can still talk to the applicants, but the public does not have a chance to speak until this goes before the BZA.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a recommendation?
Would you like for me to introduce the case?
Yes, thank you.
So case V-23-001, Gary Durham has petitioned for a variance on State Road 41 Franklin Turnpike on 0.44 acres located in the Chatham-Blair's Election District, and this variance is to Section 35-369, which is the minimum yard dimensions rear setback of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. The staff summary is included in your board packet, and Gary Durham is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Durham, you have anything to add?
Yes, sir, I have a letter from the landowner behind me. Signed, says he does not have a problem with us approaching the back line to do our addition to our building.
Okay.
And the reason we're doing the addition is to get storage, more work area for our people, and better service to the community.
All right, you can hand it to me, it'll be fine. All right, all right, thank you. In regards to the building expansion on 4200 Franklin Turnpike, property line is property owner of the adjacent property. I do not have any issue with the expansion on the backside of 4200 Franklin Turnpike towards my property. I do ask that the owner of the property install a privacy fence between the two properties at the finish of construction, signed Barry Shelton. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Durham? All right. If not, Mr. Waters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've visited the Mount Herman Meat Market today and looked at the area. What they want to do is expand, they are sort of landlocked currently, and the expansion is gonna go on to the end of what they currently have, and I saw no way that it would interfere anymore with the area than where it is now, as far as affecting the property owner. And as Mr. Durham has stated, he has a letter from the property owner saying it's fine with him. So in our packet, there's criteria that a variance has to meet. There's five different criteria, and this particular application meets all five of those criteria. So my motion would be that the Planning Commission approve this variance application for Mr. Durham.
A motion for recommendation of approval by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks.
I didn't get one, so I vote yes.
A motion to make a recommendation of approval passes, seven yes, zero no. Case V-23-001, Mrs. Ragsdale.
So case V-23-002, William and Aaron Shellhorse have petitioned for a variance located on Indian Trail Road on 1.42 acres located in the Chatham-Blair's Election District. Their variance is to Section 35-226, minimum yard dimensions, B-side setback of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. The staff summary is included in your board packet, and James Shellhorse is here to represent the petition.
Please state your name for the record.
William James Shellhorse.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shellhorse.
Thank you. I intend to build a garage on my property due to the slopes and drainage issues I have. I ask for variance on the side setback rule to be reduced from 20% of road frontage, excuse me, 10% of road frontage to the minimum of 10%. I can present to the commission a letter from my neighbor for whose property this would be closest to. He's in agreement with it, has no issues with it. I'll give this to you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Shellhorse? He has submitted a letter for the record, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Scopini of 578 Indian Trail Road, Danville, Virginia. Dear Mr. Waters and members of the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, as owners of the property adjacent to 564 Indian Trail Road, we wish to state that we understand the variance being requested by James Shellhorse and have no objection to his request. We are fully aware of his plans and appreciate his diligence in seeking compliance. Signed, sincerely, Thomas Scopini and Kathleen Scopini. Thank you, Mr. Shellhorse. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Shellhorse? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we're not required to make a recommendation, Mr. Waters, but if you would like to, by all means.
I would, Mr. Chairman. I've spoken with Mr. Shellhorse over the phone about this, and our package had I've spoken with Mr. Shellhorse over the phone about this, and our package has the photos showing the issue that he has with his property and what he wants to do, and the five criteria is the same with his application, and all five criteria have been met. So I would also make a motion that the commission present to the Board of Zoning Appeals, case V-23-002, to be approved.
Motion by Mr. Waters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. Ready for vote. Mrs. Henderson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Me? Yes. Motion to recommend approval to the BZA passes, seven yes, zero no. I believe that's it for the evening. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned at 7:47.